Good morning. Today is Tuesday, April 26th. The time is nine o'clock. Board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. All of us are with us. Please identify yourself.
Daisy Lewis, Clerk's Office.
Brad Smith, Assessor's Office.
Welcome back.
David Phillips, Ada County Operations.
Bruce Crisco, Operations.
Shannon Roberts, Trash Filling.
Druppa Fola, WCA.
Dara Barney, WCA.
I'm Audie, Ada County's Allen West.
Tom Bridge, Clerk's Office.
Noah Hill, Procurement.
Robin Sweeney, Procurement.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
IT guy.
Beth Mon, Treasure.
Bob Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Bob, Critic, Sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Got a couple folks on the bridge, too.
Oh, yeah, we do have some on the bridge. Excuse me. We have Robert Sweeney. We have Stephanie Johnson, Noah Hill, and Bethan DeCalli. Right? They're on the bridge, so they're officially with us. Ma'am Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, may I have a motion to remove the unfinished business from the, uh, from the table?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're gonna discuss an award of bid number 22054, Ada County Weed Pest and Mosquito Abatement Facility Backup Generator.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, uh, the evaluation team for bid 22054, the Ada County Weed Pest and Mosquito Abatement Facility Backup Generator, Generator Replacement 2022, has reviewed the two bids submitted and would like to submit this letter, uh, with the evaluation team's recommendation.
If you could read it for the record?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Uh, letter dated April 26th, 2022, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid 22054. Dear members of the board, after reviewing the two bids submitted, both bidders were substant- substantially over budget. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to reject the two bids submitted for bid 22054 and reassess options for this project.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
What are our options?
Our options, uh, we'd like to possibly go to open market on this one, uh, to see and feel out the bidding community and see what is going on. Because we felt we were pretty healthy in that bid, and, uh, we missed it by a factor of two, so.
So we've had some-
That was a year ago, though. We came up with that estimate a year today, actually. Um, so that's, that's another one of the options.
So this isn't the first backup generator, um, in the last few months that have come before us, right? There's like three that we have, other backup generators for other facilities.
Uh, we have projects for generators, but they're all going. This is the only one that's stumped us so far.
But the other ones came in, we came in.
Yeah, came in, right.
So it's just this one?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that, so I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Go ahead and move to reject the bid submitted for bid 22054, Ada County Weed Pest and Mosquito Abatement Facility Backup Generator Replacement 2022, because they are all over budget.
That's correct.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have two resolutions, uh, before us. Um, I'll open the public hearing on resolution number 2747, Resolution Adjusting the Ada County Budget to Reflect the Receipt of Unscheduled Revenue to the Ada County Emergency Rental Assistance Consolidated Appropriation Act budget. Is there discussion on, on, uh, on that resolution?
Mr. Chair, um, the amount is, uh, $5,209,618.
Yes, and we do have it in the bank, right?
Yes. Don's like, yes, okay, wouldn't be on there.
Yes. All right. Do we have, uh, any discussion or a motion? Oh, wait a minute, I'll close the, uh, the public hearing on resolution 2747.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution 2747 as listed on the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. You've heard the, uh, the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on resolution 2748, A Resolution to Auction Ten Vehicles from the Sheriff's Office. Uh, do we have discussion on the resolution?
Probably a bunch of old Tahos.
Probably.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Kenyon, there are a few of the old Crown Vics that the Sheriff's Office no longer needs and a few other used vehicles that, uh, are not needed anymore, so they'll be going to auction.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number 2748. It's a pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve resolution number 2748 as listed on the agenda.
Second that.
Yeah, you've heard the, uh, the motion. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we're now moving to a proclamation. I'm gonna ask, uh, Commissioner Davidson to read the proclamation for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the, uh, Board of County Commissioners, Ada County, State of Idaho, Proclamation, Denim Day for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 27th, 2022. Whereas the United States Government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and the Women and Children's Alliance has declared April 27th, 2022 as Denim Day. And whereas, both events are intended to draw atten- attention to the fact that rape and sexual assault remains a serious issue in our society. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day were also instituted to call attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault, and the problem that many in society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of assault and forcible rape. And whereas, wearing denim on April 27th underscores the message that the clothing of a man or woman wears can never be an excuse to be physically assaulted. Whereas, with proper education on the matter, there is compelling evidence that we can successfully reduce incidents of this alarming and psychologically damaging crime. And whereas, the County of Ada is an important partner in the Women and Children's Alliance's efforts to educate our community about the true impact of rape and sexual assault. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the Board of Ada County Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 27th, 2022 as Denim Day for Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the County of Ada, and encourage all citizens to speak out against sexual assault and support local efforts to provide help and healing to victims of these crimes. Thank you.
Okay, uh, is there any discussion?
No, Mr. Chair, just wanted to make mention that, um, Women and Children's Alliance have been around about a hundred and ten years, right, in our community, doing some really great work. They've got a 24-hour hotline, provide really valuable services. And so I was just gonna check in to see if Dan or Drew wanted to maybe tell us a little bit about any events or anything you have going on and, um, just educate us right here.
Um, well, we're the WCA, obviously, and, uh, we provide services for any survivor, um, involved in sexual assault or domestic violence. Uh, we're here, we're, uh, trying to be more out in the community, so we're very appreciative. And we have two hotlines, a sexual assault hotline and a domestic violence hotline that can be called at any time and is all over any marketing materials we have, so that's the first step, so come to us before you meet us.
And I think our own Jan Bennetts is on your board, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Did you guys go to the Elizabeth Smart event?
We did not, unfortunately.
Yeah, it was fabulous. She's doing a great job being an advocate.
I've read some of her books, so.
Yeah, Commissioner Beck and I both attended that and really appreciated, yeah, what you guys do.
Well, we're appreciative of what you guys do and thank you for spending the time and highlighting the event and wear denim tomorrow.
Wearing denim, yep.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, do you want to do a photo or anything?
We would love that.
Okay, hot hooker.
Okay, we can do that.
Close the record.
Get right in front of here. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Perfect.
We'll probably put this on our Facebook page, Elizabeth's, our information officer, and get a link to your group there.
Thank you so much. Oh, that was important. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have to pass the resolution.
You don't want to stay and listen to landfill?
We have to pass the proclamation first.
Right. Or you leave, we'll do, we'll do the motion.
Will anyone have a motion?
Yep, I'll go ahead.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the proclamation as listed on the agenda and designate April 27th, 2022 as Denim Day for Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, uh, we're now going to, uh, open a few bids. Uh, the first bid is, uh, bid number 22049, Ada County Landfill Liner Drain. Bob?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, before you this morning, we do have three openings, first of which is bid 22049, the Ada County Landville NRC4 Liner Drain Gravel. And our bonfire procurement system's queued up there, and if you'd like, we'll proceed with the opening.
Let's go ahead.
Tom's so excited.
Yes, I am. No, we'll be opening up a spreadsheet here shortly, and, uh, we'll have the name of the bidder and the bid amount submitted for each of those bidders. So we can see the bidders right now, but the, uh, spreadsheet will open up here shortly. We should really have some theme music going on.
I know, like the Jeopardy. Trucking company.
All right, so we have, uh, the four bidders up there and the bid amounts. If you'd like, go ahead and read them into the record.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, we have, uh, first bidder is Kelly Pomeroy Trucking LLC, and they have a total bid amount of $1,673,500. Uh, second bidder is Knife River Corporation, and they have a total bid amount of $1,498,000. Uh, third is Lyle Reed Farms LLC, and they have a, uh, bid amount of $1,737,1,737,845. And, uh, fourth bidder is Sunrock Corporation with a total bid amount of $1,412,500.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Tom, is this, so explain the whole process to us, not in detail, but, I mean, for a million and a half, what are we getting there?
This is the ladder that goes on top of the liner so that water can drain down and get to the leachate sump so we can pump the leachate out.
So this is just gravel?
Yep, this is, this is specifically washed and shaped drain gravel so that it won't clog and material won't get stuck in it, so water can continue to drain.
Okay, so you must be buying tons of it.
Forty thousand cubic yards.
Forty thousand cubic yards, okay.
NRC4 in the sump.
It lines the entire bottom layer of the sump.
That's a big pile of rocks.
Yes, sir, it is.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
It'll take some time for, uh, this rock to be delivered, so I think we-
Where do they get, where do they get that rock?
Uh, it has to be, well, any gravel pick can do it, but they have to specifically wash it and round it, so it won't catch material. So that's, that's the reason it takes a long-
Oh, the round elbow, yeah, okay.
I see, so they have to process it, okay.
What would be a good date?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kenyon, uh, if we could table this for award to the, uh, May 2nd, 2022 Open Business Meeting?
Sure.
Appreciate it.
I'll make that motion to table the award of bid 22049, Ada County Landfill North Ravine Cell 4 Liner Drain Gravel to May 2nd, 2022.
Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
It's good, we've got four.
Next one, we have RFP 22057, Ada County Ground Maintenance for Courthouse and Civic Plaza.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, we received one proposal, proposal for, uh, RFP 22057, and, uh, we have our bonfire procurement system ready to go. You ready for us to open?
Sure, let's go.
And this is after we've separated him from the other facilities?
Yes, yes, so these, we have two bids. One will be for, the first one of which is for the grounds maintenance for Courthouse, and the second one, which we'll get to here shortly, is for the other facilities. So today, we're just looking for the name of the proposer, and, uh, that is Pro Care Landscape Services. So there are, uh, sole proposer for this project.
Okay. You have a date, same date?
Uh, actually, we'll need a little more time on this one to, uh, evaluate the proposal, and we'd like to request that this be tabled for final ranking and award consideration to the May 10th, 2022 Open Business Meeting.
Okay, move to table the final rankings and award recommendation for RFP 22057, Ada County Grounds, Grounds Maintenance for Courthouse and Civic Plaza Complex 2, May 10th, 2022.
Second.
Okay.
This'll be funny if it's the same, only one on the next one and it's the same company.
All right, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries. All right. Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, drum roll.
I know.
Oh, yeah.
Because we split, you know, tell them, "For to split these up," because it's happened before.
Yeah. Okay, next one, where we'll hear, get the opening for RFP 22058, uh, Ada Ground Maintenance for Select Ada County Facilities. Go ahead, Bob.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, we received, uh, one proposal for RFP 22058, and, um, go ahead and, uh, proceed with the OP of that. And like the, uh, last RFP, we're just looking for the name of the proposer, and, uh, should be popping up here in just a second. There it is. So the, the one proposer for this, uh, for this project is all site. And, uh, we'll need a little time to, uh, evaluate this proposal as well, and we'd like to request that this be, uh, tabled for final ranking and award consideration to the May 10th, 2022 Open Business Meeting.
Okay. Any discussion or motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to table the final rankings and award recommendations of RFP 22058, Ada County Grounds Maintenance for Select Ada County Facilities 2022, to May 10th, 2022.
I'll second that.
Hey, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Appreciate it. Right.
All right. We now have a change order, uh, change order number four, Coroner's Office Replacement Facility Agreement Number 14570, Increase $686,761.91. Um, is there any discussion on this change order?
Look, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is for the HEPA filtration system on the new coroner's project. We originally were going to use, uh, ARPA funding for this, but due to the fact that we'd have to bid it as a separate project to bring in another contractor to interact with the current contractor, our warranties, uh, for plumbing, electrical, um, and, uh, HVAC would be in jeopardy, uh, due to the fact that they have to hook on and connect to all, all of those systems. So, uh, we did, uh, this change order first and foremost is, uh, currently funded, um, with, um, uh, value engineering that we did during the redesign and rebid of the project, so we, uh, have enough money to cover the costs of this. Now, we have one more change order coming for the generators, and that is going to be covered by master facility funds that were moved into the project.
Okay, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So the generator couldn't be paid for with ARPA funding as well? Same, same issue?
No.
Doesn't seem like it would be.
Our legal, uh, department's interpretation of ARPA, uh, does not allow for the payment of generators or funding for generators.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve change order number four for the Coroner's Office Replacement Facility as listed on the agenda. Authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Okay, do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, now we have, uh, licenses, uh, and we'll begin with a peddler's license. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just to add a little information, since last week, we had a couple of licenses. Uh, Daisy's here as well, in case there's any questions. Um, these are same company, just a couple more. These ones have been reviewed, and these ones are, are good to go. We have a couple others that are being held up. Commissioner Kenyon, you had asked about, there was an infraction issued to one of the individuals, so we've ran that to legal. I mean, it is just an infraction, you know, so Sheriff's Office had cited them for, um, for going around without a license, but hence why we're seeing all these licenses come through, too. I think that triggered it.
These are the solar panels?
Yeah, these are solar panels, yeah. So all the same people, just one big company has people up, going door to door.
Okay. Did you want to say something?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve two peddler solicitor licenses as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have several, um, licenses. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, move to approve and ratify the renewal license previously signed by Commissioner Beck on 4/29/2022, as identified on the agenda. Approve the remaining licenses as listed on the agenda, including four catering permits, two new licenses, and 56 license renewals, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
And just for the record, it was actually 4/19/2022. And I'll second that.
Yes. Okay.
Is it 4/19? I have 4/29.
I've got a typo.
Any, yeah.
Got it.
Okay, uh, you've heard the motion. Uh, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And now we have with us our distinguished clerk.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Um, it seems like a broken record. Obviously, there's an election coming up quickly. Uh, the postcards that I mentioned last week did go out, so hopefully you got yours in the mail. Uh, they kind of hit Saturday, Monday-ish, uh, so, uh, we've gotten a really positive reception to those going out, so hopefully that helps inform people of where to go vote with all the changes coming up. Early voting is set to begin next Monday, uh, so we're, uh, today, we're three, exactly three weeks away.
He's counting.
Yeah, exactly.
Who's counting?
So, uh, things are well underway. Uh, Saul and the team have been doing a great job, and things have been going, uh, very smoothly, so. Uh, Trent is now out there at least two days a week, just full-time out there, probably gonna be about three times. So, uh, he's handling a lot of trying to just make sure things go smoothly. I'm helping a little bit with some of the anomalies that are coming up, but when by that, I mean, we've got, uh, some unique requests for poll watchers and things that we've never seen before. So we're working closely with the Secretary of State's office just to navigate those issues as we get ready for reelection coming up.
Those are one of the anomaly?
Yep, so like-
What are those?
We've always had some poll watcher, you know, we'll have a handful here or there. I think back in November, we had a, a larger request for poll watchers. This election, uh, so far we haven't, but we've had someone actually request poll watchers at all of the early voting locations, which won't be a problem, but also request watchers in the office while we're processing absentee ballots. We, we, we've had observers. We're just making sure that we've got everything buttoned up legally and have been working with Lorna on all of it.
Can people still, uh, apply to be poll watchers or election judges or any other personnel?
Yeah, um, yes, I think we're in a good place, from what I'm told, in terms of poll workers. Uh, Mitch and crew seem pretty good. In terms of watchers, they have to be requested 12 days in advance by either candidate or political party. Most of the time, that comes like day 12 before the election. Um, but it, it has to, so for early voting, uh, we got the request last week, because it has to be 12 days in advance of early voting beginning. And so that's where some of the clarity is just, we're going beyond just Election Day, which we've historically seen, right? And so, but I don't, I don't see any issues, you know?
Do you have that trailer? Do you move around a little?
Yeah, the mo-
That's one of the early voting-
That is one of the locations.
Yes, there's gonna be poll watchers there. They have to be notified each day where it is.
Well, we've got that, we've already been, we had that posted, uh, for a while, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so anyone who wants to vote or wants to watch, uh, that is, uh, noted. Um, we do provide identification for all the poll watchers, because law enforcement wants to know, like, I mean, people are always curious, you know, if someone's there other than just voting purposes. Um, uh, but we will have the mobile voting unit specifically serving STAR, you, you know, the outlining areas. I think it does one day in southeast Boise and my, near Micron. Yeah, and like I said, really, things are going smoothly in terms of the election, so I hope it just continues, and hopefully we get good turnout for the election.
Okay, anything else for us?
I don't think so at this point.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we'll, we'll, I'll entertain a motion on the Claims Journal.
I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated April twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Second that.
Hey, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 May I have a motion on the Personnel Actions?
I move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda, and let the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Second that.
Any further motions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We have with us our distinguished assessor, Mr. Bob McQuaid. You got some good stuff for us?
Well, let's find out.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I was here a week ago yesterday with my assessment briefing, telling you what's going on, the values and whatnot, and you had three questions, and we've got that information. If you want to take a minute, Brad Smith could respond to those three questions that you had and give you the information.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. One of the questions was how much property does the federal government own within unincorporated Ada County? And I don't know if, I'll think you got the email, but basically, there's fifty-three-point-four percent of the county, and most of that's responsible because of, you know, owned properties, owned south property. So it's interesting, and I don't, I didn't apologize, I didn't make copies, but I'll pass that through, but a little Ada County actually owns and how much the federal government owns. And then even some of the cities own properties within Ada County, like the waste treatment facility out south of town. But I can email a few copies of this, and then additionally, there's another screenshot on there which shows graphs. The second question was how many, I believe it was you came here to ask about homeowners' exemptions and what percentage. And it's trending, years ago, it used to be about seventy-five percent, and we're at seventy-eight percent now of total, total properties have the homestead exemption.
Oh, so it's up.
Yes, it's actually, yeah, it's contrary to what you were saying.
Right.
With all the investors in the county, it's actually increasing, so, which I think is a good sign.
Yeah, it's a good sign and surprising, because numbers that we've, have been reported are that there's a lot more people that are non-owner occupied.
Right, right. So it is, it is trending up just slightly, but-
Seventy-eight percent then?
Yes, and it shows it on that. That was the only one I had, I apologize. And then the third question was in regards to Linda, one of the new urban renewal districts. It's just on the other side, just to the south side of Ten Mile, so that's a map there. And just that question came up, what location it was during the presentation Bob did, so. And I'll, I'll email you copies of all this, too.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you. Go ahead.
That's everything from the Assessor's office this morning.
Okay. Thank you. We have one tax cancellation. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve. The tax cancellation is listed on the agenda, which includes one tax cancellation for twenty twenty-one. Authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 We have with us our distinguished treasurer, Beth Mom. Do you have a good report for us or any report?
Yeah, oh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, pretty much business as usual in our office right now. You've heard plenty about investments from us the last few weeks, so really nothing to add on that, so. No real report.
Okay, good. All right, well, thank you. Okay, we, Shara is here for discussion on the Republic Services trash billing.
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners, as we begin to prepare FY twenty-three budgets, I wanted to bring something in front of you for possible consideration. Every year, we certify unpaid residential trash service to property taxes. And as a result of that, we are continuing to collect money owed to Republic Services, and we cut them a small monthly check after best offices collected that and distributed to our office. We ran the reports last night, and it's actually down a little bit more. As of right now, we owe one thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-one cents. And those are guaranteed funds, so we'll continue to, best office will continue to collect those. And then there's a small portion of two hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty cents for commercial services, which we cannot certify commercial services to property taxes. We would have to work with the collection agency to receive those funds, but we would like to suggest doing a final payment to Republic Services as a one-time check from our enterprise fund, opposed to collecting these small portions for several more years, because we're still collecting back to two thousand nineteen. No, actually, seventeen. So it can take quite a few years for us to bring this money in.
So if it's not balanced at the end of the collection period, what if they owe us money back?
I'm not quite sure I understand the question.
Well, are we guaranteed to, it doesn't sound like we're guaranteed to collect the exact amount that we're gonna pay them, right? Because one's commercial-
We will, the residential, the seventeen hundred, that is guaranteed funds, but the two hundred and forty-five dollars, we would potentially eat out of our enterprise fund, unless we can work with the collection agency to get that money back.
Okay. And probably we're gonna save more than two hundred and forty-five dollars by cutting one check versus consistently having to do this every month throughout the year.
And we have a finance specialist in our office, because now we have the hardened contract they have to go through, and they have to figure out what portion is, belongs to Republic and what's hardened certified funds.
So this would just pull that out, okay, yeah, sounds like-
Alternatively, we can continue to budget for the payoff amount, but it's getting to be such a small amount, I would recommend, if you guys are okay with it, to just cut him a final check.
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Do we need a motion?
No.
All right.
Heads up, thumbs up.
All right, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shara.
We have the minutes. I'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 We have the interim events, agreements, and concessionary agreements for Expo Idaho. I'll entertain a motion on those agreements.
Well, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the four interim event agreements and two concessionary agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. We have the parks and waterways, Barbara Park Education and Event Center Agreement. We have five of them. Do I have a motion for those five?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the five Barbara Park Education and Event Center Agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, now we have a number of agreements. Do we have any discussion on any of these agreements that we're going to be talking about?
Well, Mr. Chair, this has come before at least me three times now for approval of agreement with Ada County and Dottie the Clown, and I just wanted to clarify that that's not our coroner.
I'm glad for that clarification. I did notice the Dottie the Clown one. Okay, do we have any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the fourteen agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
There's a note that just came in. Is that clarifying that it is Dottie the coroner?
Yeah.
For the record.
Weird.
Might go watch that, then.
Exactly.
Okay, we, we had a request this week from the Governor's Office. The Governor is going to declare a drought declaration, and he's asked each county in the area, the effective area, and the area that he's proposing a drought declaration for is every county south of the salmon. And so that includes Ada County, and he's, he's asked every county to take this into consideration if we want to participate or not. And we've asked, Mr. Lombardo is here.
He is not here, and he's requesting that this be tabled, discussion be tabled to legal, and he'll be here for that.
Okay, we will, we will then discuss this in our legal discussion, because we need to determine if the county is going, if it's beneficial to the citizens of Ada County if we participate in that declaration or not.
So, Mr. Chair, just for the record, so we'll go into executive session for legal advice. However, then the Board will go back into open session to either make a decision, or we might table it until after the call with the Governor and his staff on Wednesday. And so I think we want to just make sure that we've talked to all the appropriate people before this Board makes a decision to opt in or opt out.
And we can do that. That's what we'll, so with that, we'll be in recess.
Mr. Chairman, I think you need to make a motion to table it.
Would you?
Yeah, before legal.
I'll make a, make a motion to table the emergency, potential emergency drought declaration to open session after legal.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we're in recess. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, April twenty-sixth. The time is nine of forty. The Board of Commissioners, sitting as the Board of Emergency Medical Services District, is in session to conduct this weekly Open Business Meeting. All three Commissioners are present. Also with us are-
Sean Rain, paramedic.
Phil McGrane, clerk.
Phil McGrane, the clerk. Okay, Madam Clerk, is there, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, may I have a motion on the Claims Journal?
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated April twenty-second, twenty twenty-two regarding EMS expenditures.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion on Personnel actions.
I move to approve the Personnel action as listed on the agenda, and let the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, Mr. Sean.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. I wanted to first start off on the agenda, bring back our Access Awards that we gave to folks at the last Executive Board meeting. Commissioner Kenyon asked that I bring that back to the Board, and so I've got the first set of awards. I'd like to read it in the record, if I may.
Sure.
Okay. The first award was an Excellence Award. So there are three types of awards, an Excellence Award, a Life-Saving Award, and a Humanity Award that, that people can get in the Access System. So this first one was an Excellence Award. The incident date was actually December first of twenty twenty. This one goes way back to the Vaccine Clinic that we did. So the staff that got the award were Amy Fuller, who is our logistics officer, Janie Wing, one of our battalion chiefs, Jackie Cole, and Laurel Snight, which Laurel is actually an administrative assistant at the Boise Fire Department. These folks worked extremely hard on the COVID vaccination clinic. These individuals went above and beyond for the colleague, for their colleagues in the community, but also represent the values of Ada County Paramedics and Access. And so if we didn't have these, these four individuals, we could not have put that Vaccine Clinic together. And if you can remember, we vaccinated not only all the access providers, but law enforcement. We vaccinated some judges. We did a lot of work out there, so that was a great award. The next one was a Life-Saving Award. This incident date was August twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-one. The crews, our, the Ada County crews specifically was Cliff Fine and John Cugina. On this one, Ada County Paramedic and Eagle Fire responded to a seventy-two-year-old patient with chest pain. A STEMI or an ST elevation MI was called in the field, and a cath, the cath lab was notified. The patient did code, and it was a solid code save, so this person had a good outcome. Another Life-Saving Award from October fifteenth of twenty twenty-one. This, this was actually a Boise firefighter that went into cardiac arrest while responding to a structure fire. The, the folks from Ada County were Cameron Augustine and our Italian chief, Brandon LaRosa. We also had Matthew Cota, who is now with the Eagle Fire Department. But they, they worked this firefighter, and he's actually back on duty. He was in cardiac arrest, so that was a great outcome.
While fighting a fire.
Well, yeah, he, and it was on the way to the fire, when they, they arrived at the fire, from what I understand, he was unconscious in the back of the fire truck, and they pulled him out, and he was in cardiac arrest, so. But he's back on the job now, so that's a great outcome. Then we also have a Life-Saving Award. This one was back in December of twenty-one. Don Ray and Michael Metham were dispatched to an OB-GYN call, and they had a breach presentation on a delivery, so the baby was coming out backwards, and that's a pretty scary thing, certainly for paramedics in the field. But the crew was calm, competent, and worked together extremely well to produce a good outcome for that patient, which is, that's pretty awesome.
Great.
Next one is another Life-Saving Award. This is from February of twenty twenty-two. Jake Oven, which is, he's one of our battalion chiefs, Samantha Butterfield, and an employee who's no longer with Ada County Paramedic, Shree Stider, responded to the port of a code blue in a vehicle on, on the side of the road. They had, the Fire Department had to locate the car and identify the patient and start a treatment. Dr. Cornet, actually, on this one, said excellent overall care. I do believe that it was the swift response and early CPR that saved this man's life, so another good outcome. And then the final one from that set of awards that were delivered, a Life-Saving Award from March of this year, Mike Zinn and Dan Quintero, dispatched to a ninety-six-year-old female with chest pain. She went into cardiac arrest two and a half minutes from the hospital, and they got return of spontaneous circulation, so they got her heart going again. Prior to movement into the hospital was another code save. So that was the first set of awards that we gave at the Access level. I do know that there's another one coming for the meeting on Thursday morning. There are more to deliver, and, but that's a really good thing that we've been able to do for our Access crews.
Great.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Maybe it would be appropriate for the Board to send out a letter with our thanks and gratitude and signature on it to these recipients? I think that would be a-
Yeah, we can certainly get the list names.
That's right.
And I think, yeah, just-
Have the list names to us, we'll send-
And if you could have Judy put that in, just the Board's process, no matter what Board sitting here, I think that that's totally appropriate.
Yeah.
None of those folks.
Excellent, yeah. Okay, well, good. Do you have any other update for us?
The only other update is we announced on Thursday of last week that we are likely going to be moving our schedule to a rotating schedule starting January first, really matching the number of hours that the Fire Department works. And the conundrum that we face, and I think the Board is well aware of this, is the way that we're funded, we can give raises, or we can increase the level of service, but we can't do both at the same time. So really, we've spent- So really, I've spent the last seven months trying to figure out how we can do more with what we have today. Because it's pretty obvious with the work that, that myself, the deputy chiefs, and even the attorneys have done for us that, um, you know, the only option we have at this point is going out for a full super majority vote of, uh, to get people to raise their own taxes and, um, that's a, a long shot for certain. Not saying that, that couldn't happen in the future, uh, uh, but, uh, this does a number of things. It, it's caused a fair amount of angst because we've been on the schedule that we're on today for the last thirty-five years. Uh, prior to that, we run at what's called a twenty-four forty-eight, so you work twenty-four hours, you're off for forty-eight, repeat. Um, this schedule is twenty-four on, twenty-four off, twenty-four on, twenty-four off, twenty-four on, four days off. It's the same number of hours as that previous schedule I mentioned, same number of hours the fire department works. Uh, most of the fire departments in the valley were on the schedule that we're proposing, which is called a modified Kelly schedule. Um, and they all moved to a forty-eight ninety-six, and we did take a look at that. Uh, but forty-eight hours in one setting is too much for, for, certainly for ambulance crews to do. I, it's, uh, one of the riskier shift schedules we could do. This does do a number of things, it brings the annual pay for a starting paramedic in today's dollars before whatever the COLA or merit and or merit the board gives for next year. Starting pay for a paramedic becomes sixty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars, which is above, uh, what Boise Fire's starting pay is for firefighters. So it, it brings us in line with them. Um, this is also moving EMTs to fifteen dollars an hour and then reflecting that through our pay scale of that eighty-two cent an hour raise for EMTs, advanced EMTs, paramedics, um, FTOs, captains. The only group that we weren't able to do that for were our battalion chiefs, but it put them really too far on the, the higher side of the pay range. And so, um, but, uh, we, uh, we've been out, myself and the deputy chiefs have been out meeting with crews and talking to crews, um, trying to, to settle down some of the angst. I, I, uh, I know that we're gonna have some people that, uh, the schedule's just not gonna work for them. They're, they're probably gonna leave the county. Um, but at this point in time, and I've said this to, to my command staff and I've, I've said it to, um, a number of people, I look in the future, if we don't do something now, three to five years, this department will go away. Um, we already had Meridian this year, um, proposing putting on two ambulances because we're not providing a level of service that is adequate out there. And I, I s- I don't, frankly, don't blame them for being upset with the level of service out there. So it came down to, we looked at a lot of different options. We spent, like I said, the last seven months looking at all the different schedules available to us in the EMS field. And, uh, this is the one that, that will be able to provide service in the future and, uh, you know, pay people, uh, an annual salary that, uh, is more commensurate with, uh, certainly the industry, uh, but also the local fire departments, so. Um, this year, we, we've lost a, a number of people to the fire departments. Uh, we started our academy in January, unable to fill the twelve vacancies that we had. Uh, we were only able to fill ten of those, so, um, you know, I think a, a lot of people look at the starting pay and they realize very quickly that they can't afford to live here, um, on what, what we were paying, so we had to make a change, so. That's, uh, and we'll continue, uh, messaging this and, and getting out and talking to folks in the coming weeks, but.
Yeah, good.
Are you just having, are you just going out to each individual station or are you gonna have groups come together?
Yeah, right now, we're going out to each individual station. We're eventually going to have either, uh, a set of town halls, so that we have smaller groups for discussion, and then eventually a, a larger department meeting. Um, at, uh, our larger department meeting, we sat down last fall, late last fall, and, um, developed a new set of mission, vision, and values for the department. Uh, but I wanted to get this, this body of work done before we really set the new vision for the department. Because I'll be honest with you, when I came back, the way that we're funded and with the growth that we've experienced in the county, it was difficult to have a vision without funding going behind it, you know? Uh, what, I knew that we couldn't stay the same and, uh, you know, I, I, this does provide a path for us to move on in the future. So, any questions?
No, go ahead.
How is your Medicaid thing coming along? Are they gonna, are they gonna have that ready to go?
Yeah, we have our first meeting week after next with, uh, uh, the Department of Medicaid. Um, and actually, it's gonna be Director Jepson, um, the, uh, Medicaid director, so the wheels are moving on that.
Good.
Yep.
And then that would be retroactive.
Retroactive.
Once they get.
Yeah, they can get the work done by the end of June, um, that'll go retroactive back to April first. If it's after July first, it would be set on July first, retroact, back to that date. So we're really gonna push to get this done before June thirtieth. The consultant the Fire Chiefs Association has hired has done this before, so I don't think it's gonna be a tremendous amount of work. But having not done that bodywork myself, um, that's up to the state Medicaid department, so.
And that would be a pretty big boost to your department.
Yeah, we're looking, uh, at, for the system, seven to eight million dollars and just, uh, you know, what, uh, we're talking about at the, and obviously this will be up to the elected officials on the Executive Board, um, to approve it. But as the chiefs, we've been talking about first taking that money and, and paying for the things that we all pay for in access, um, which will be the biggest benefit beneficiary will be our department for that because we pay the most in access now. That would be the first step. The second thing would be identifying system-wide projects that we could do, whether that would be innovations in, um, alternate response. Instead of sending a fire truck and an ambulance to everything, maybe we send a sedan or a pickup truck to these calls where we don't need, um, you know, a full response, thereby, you know, leaving our response network in place so that we can respond better. Um, equipment, you name it, with, you know, different projects. And then when we're done with that, um, we'll, we'll divvy that money up to the departments. And that'll be the act, the next exercise, really figure out how we're gonna distribute that money, uh, equitably to the different departments. I personally feel like we should get half of the money because we do each one of those pe- patients we're seeing, you know, but the fire department's all, um, sharing a piece of that, so we'll just, uh, we'll have that discussion as we move forward.
All right, well, thank you, just keep us updated.
Okay.
All right. All right, we had a discussion. Hearing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be in recess. Thank you.